That's Caplaril right up the street, that's where.
Yeah. Use the county credit card.
We go there, you might have to drive.
Well, he's bringing a Jeep, you can drive it. We roll him. He says prayer. You say a prayer. Good evening, want to call this meeting of the Union County Land Use Board, October the seventeenth, to order. First thing we're going to do is do the Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vice Chairman, would you please plead us in a prayer, please?
Yes, please. Everyone, please bow your head. My fellow Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to serve the citizens of Union County. Lord, I pray that you'll be with us to give us wisdom and knowledge in the decisions that are made tonight, so that when everyone leaves, we'll be confident with what was said and what was done. Lord, I thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us this day. And, Lord, we just look forward to what will be coming tomorrow, Lord. Lord, we just thank you for all things now, and we just ask his blessing, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Uh, next item is to establish voting members. We do have, uh, some absentees tonight. We have six of us here, uh, one is, Mr. Baucham is an alternate. Uh, I think the board has agreed that we will stay at five members. Uh, so we have a, an odd number, so if there's a split vote, um, we can conduct business. So, Mr. Baucham, you will be here as a alternate, should something happen to one of us, you step in, but, right?
I'm ready.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, we do have a quorum with five, our, our regular quorum is seven, but, uh, five of us will be making decisions tonight. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Y'all have seen the agenda, I believe. Hearing none. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Okay, approval of the minutes of the September nineteenth meeting. You all see those before you hear. We had a chance to read those.
I did, I make a motion, we approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, uh, first item on our agenda, um, only item on our agenda is a rezoning case, CZ dash two zero two three dash zero zero one McManus. And I will call Mr. Bjorn to come and discuss this case.
Uh, good evening, Chairman, members of the Land Use Board. This is a conditional rezoning, so CZ, conditional rezoning, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, we call it the McManus Road, or McManus rezoning, because it's on McManus Road. Uh, this is a request to rezone approximately two hundred and nine acres in Beaufort Township from RA forty to R fifteen with conditions, and the conditions are listed below. There's a site plan associated with this rezoning, uh, five-year vesting of development rights. This site would be served with septic, and we have, uh, requested, and the applicant has agreed with this condition, that all the septic fields would be inside private lots, as opposed to potentially also being in common open space. Uh, the development will meet all requirements of our unified development ordinance, and that the development will connect to Union County water, which we will, uh, get to later in the presentation. Uh, this is the site plan, comes off McManus Road, where there's a ninety-degree curve. They would square it up, so it would effectively be a three-way intersection. There's also a secondary, um, fire access road that would be gated, that would be used in an emergency to access the remaining portion of the site. You can see that it has, uh, roads going through the site, connecting to the south as well. Uh, this inset up here, it actually shows the water connections that were required by Union County water, is a connection to the north and a connection to the south that was required to give, uh, redundancy and, and ensuring water flow pressure to the, uh, overall network. And it totals nearly two miles. And so, the sites are shown in here, more than fifty percent is in open space. Uh, you can see there's some streams through here that have setbacks associated with them buffering. And then, um, these larger lots, you would think they're common open space, but these are actually residential lots as well. You have any questions about the site plan before we move on?
I have a question about them. I was reading that it went down from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and thirty-eight, is that correct?
Uh, the initial application was for a hundred and fifty, yes, sir.
What we see in front of that is, uh, in front of us here, is there just a hundred and thirty-eight there?
There's a hundred and thirty-eight on the site plan, yes.
Okay. So, we're not going to run into a thing where the bigger lots later on weren't a part of it, and they, you know?
That's correct.
Okay.
Everything, all hundred and thirty-eight are on here. That's correct, and if, um, sites turn out to not be, um, feasible with septic, those lots essentially don't get built. So, one thirty-eight-year upper limit, and it could reduce based on the, uh, septic situation, which I'll get into to a certain degree, and the applicants will get into in greater detail.
So, all of these we see are, are lots for homes, there's no common area anywhere?
No, the common area is outside of the lots.
Okay, okay, there, there's not like a clubhouse, or?
No, there are, I mean, there's trails, but there's no, um, there's no amenity center with like a pool and whatnot.
Right, right, okay. Any other questions? All right, carry on.
So, existing conditions, um, it's McManus Road. Looking south, and looking to the north, you can see the curve. And this is essentially the entrance into the site, looking left from this picture in the upper left. And then this is looking actually into the site, there's an existing house there. So, this, the entrance would go down this driveway effectively. In terms of development status, um, largely agricultural. Um, this was considered underdeveloped, which is, is just a designation of, that there's a house on there, but with two hundred acres, it can obviously be developed far more intensively than just one home. In terms of environmental features, you have floodplain along the, uh, western edge of the site. You have several streams crossing it. These were, um, referenced in the site plan to provide the required buffers off of them. You can see that the majority is forested, but there are some portions that are agricultural uses. Terms of zoning, uh, the vast majority of the land in this part of the county is owned RA forty, which is similar to the site as well. In terms of transportation, there are no traffic counts on McManus Road. Uh, a traffic impact analysis was conducted, they did hourly counts, they didn't do twenty-four-hour counts. We would estimate the, the traffic count on McManus Road for daily, in the several hundred cars per day at most. Um, there's approximately twenty homes along the, along the, uh, extent of the road. You can see the nearby traffic counts, there's no funded road improvements in the area for, um, upgrading. And there, uh, would be no required improvements to McManus Road as a result of this rezoning, other than squaring up the, the hard curve and making that into a three-way stop.
Now, the traffic study that you were speaking of, did it take into account what the hundred and thirty-eight homes are going to be added?
Yes, it did. Traffic, traffic studies will look at, uh, today, they'll look at the future without the development, then they'll look at the future with the development, and that difference is what you have to analyze to look for mitigation. And you have to be a, a reduction of, of, um, essentially system performance to justify having mitigation, and then what that mitigation would be.
So, all that's on an accepted level?
Yes.
I'm assuming DMVs and DOT, I'm sorry, is?
Yes, DOT, DOT is in agreement with the, with the requirements.
With three way, you're going?
With the three-way.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Land use plan for this part, for this part of the county, rural residential, which is essentially one unit per acre overall density, uh, where you have utilities and the ability to make smaller lots work and offset it with some protected open space, uh, that's referenced as an acceptable trade-off in the land use plan to, um, keep that overall density of one unit per acre in exchange for the open space. And this, this development's actually much less than one unit per acre, at a hundred and thirty-eight homes to two hundred and eight acres. It's more like two-thirds of a home per acre. In terms of schools and utilities, UCPS was contacted. Uh, this, these are the elementary, middle, and high school that this would feed, and their, their rated capacity at this time. And their, their overall observations are the fourth bullet point. They say this development by itself is not going to adversely impact these schools. However, they do, they do note that there's a lot of development that's, um, in the pipeline in this part of the county. So, if it all were to develop, yes, they're going to be, they're going to be full. Um, that's their overall assessment, however, to say that when they're going to be full, developments have a life of their own, and, um, it's pretty unpredictable. In terms of utilities?
No question on that.
Yes, sir.
The ones you were talking about that are in the pipeline, are any of them approved?
There, quite a few of them are approved, they just haven't been built yet. Some of them, like you have, for example, you have, uh, Stone Bridge, which has been under development since the nineties, and there's well over a hundred homes that have yet to be completed in that development. So, that one's been over two decades, and that's just the first example I could think of that's related to, you know, homes in the pipeline.
Okay.
In terms of utilities, you have Union County Water, um, Griffith Road's the closest, it's, uh, less than a mile. However, uh, had the connection down to Latham as well. So, that's almost two miles of, of pipe that would be constructed. And obviously, the homes that are along McManus Road have the opportunity to connect to Union County Water as a result of this. The lots would be served by septic in individual lots, and they're using a private engineering option, which is allowed in North Carolina. So, they don't, we don't have comments from Union County Environmental Health to say, this will or will not work. It's their responsibility, they've done, they've done research on the overall site and have an analysis of where the favorable soils are, and have laid out their site plan based on that. And if, when they go to build their individual septic fields, uh, if it doesn't work, that's, that's a lost lot effectively. But they'll talk about the process and the, and the details relating to the septic fields.
Uh, Mr. Tass, well, the, uh, effect with the water, with the, uh, water resources, is this going to affect any of the families that are in that area as far as lowering their water pressure?
No, the reason why, honestly, this would have come to you several months ago, except that there was a lot of back and forth on whether they just needed to rerun one line that would come off of, say, Griffith to the north, which was the shortest distance. But that wasn't going to provide the, the appropriate, uh, pressure, as well as resiliency for the water system, because you have one long line serving a lot of people, so they wanted it from the south as well, to make it into a loop.
A loop?
Yes, sir. So, that's, that's one of the recommendations that added more expense and, and added time to this process.
I have a question on the sewer again.
Mm-hmm.
So, the county really doesn't get involved in their sewer system and installation and all, a private company does all that?
From an inspector's perspective?
Yes, what I mean, so the county won't be doing any inspections on it?
That's correct.
Environmental health will not inspect it.
The only, um, so this is, a private engineering option is new, um, newer in North Carolina. Anybody has the option to, it's almost like you bypass environmental health. You hire a, a soil scientist or a, um, engineer to go out, they design a septic system. The only thing that, uh, um, the environmental health office is involved in is reviewing, uh, paperwork to make sure that the paperwork is filled out correctly. But as far as the soil testing and all that, it's completely done properly.
Okay, I'll agree with that on the soil testing, but what about the fact if a individual company is installing the septic systems? No one inspects that? The, the engineering firm does?
The engineering firm or the soil scientist is the permitting authority in that case.
So, they are held liable for it?
They are.
So, if there is an issue with the homeowner having a problem with the septic system, then they'll go back to the engineering firm?
That, that's my understanding, yes. I do know that statute did provide that, um, since the county's not involved, that it, there's sort of a waiver of liability for, for the county. But, yeah, the homeowner would just have to go back to that engineer and find out, you know, why is my system not working? I guess they could come to the county and get the county to go out and look at it and approve a new system, but, um, existing system is completely done properly.
Okay, I was, I had misunderstood that, I thought the engineering firm guaranteed it to work, then the Union County Environmental Health would inspect it to make sure that they were putting it in to protect the county against the engineering firm, but that's, that's not right.
Now, my, my understanding about this process is, is the county, we're just reviewing, environmental, they just reviewed paperwork to make sure it's filled out properly, but all the permitting is, is private.
In terms of public feedback, a community meeting is required for conditional rezonings. It was held, uh, three weeks ago, uh, seven attendees, and there were concerns over schools, road safety and capacity, rural character, as well as the lot size, this relatively small lot sizes for septic service. If this rezoning was in close proximity to a municipality, we would have consulted them for their feedback. And it's more than a couple miles from Mineral Springs or Monroe or Waxaw, so we did not consult them for municipal feedback. In terms of the pluses and negatives of this, uh, again, the negative is, just like what you questioned, the uncertainty of, of feasibility of the septic service for lots. The positives are that the use and density is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This part of the county is for rural, um, low-density, single-family development. That's what this is, on smaller lots, in exchange for significant preserved open space. The water lines will allow nearby residents to connect to water if they choose. The school cluster is currently not over capacity, and there's significant open space provided as a part of this, uh, site plan. So, based on those positives and negatives, we recommend approval of this rezoning. And the way this process works for, for tonight, you can ask me any questions you want. We have the, uh, applicant team here, we also have, uh, people who have signed up to speak. And, um, you know, the applicant gets as much time as, as you deem necessary to receive the information, and then the speakers can go and speak.
Okay, I have one more question. On the, uh, water line going in, my understanding is, if there is a county water line going in front of the, or some of the right of the road, and I own two lots there, and I want to build two houses, is it required that I have to tie on the county water? If I am separate, totally separate from this division?
Yes.
Can I still dig a well?
No, if you're, if you have it, if you have it in front of your property, then you would connect to it.
You are required to connect to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. But if you already have an existing well, and you're already there, then you just have a choice if you want to or not, correct?
If, if you need to continue using your existing well?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're not building anything, then you're fine.
So, any, any future development on that road would have to, would have to get county water?
Yes, sir, if they have, if they have frontage on it.
But everybody else is good, if they don't want it, they don't have to take it.
If, if you're not changing anything, you don't need to change anything.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That's a good question. Any other questions for Mr. Hanson? All right, well, if those who are, um, requesting this rezoning, that would like to come up and speak, in whatever order y'all want to come up, um, and, um, please state your name, so we know who you are, and?
Good evening, Board, uh, Andrew Galick with, uh, True Homes.
Okay.
Uh, out of Monroe, so, local builder. Um, you know, Bjorn kind of stole the thunder as far as, you know, what, what all the project entails. Um, you know, our highlights is, you know, are that it's a lot of, or a lot of open space, fifty-two percent. Um, you know, a hundred and thirty-eight homes, um, for something that's over two hundred acres. We, we have used a local septic, uh, soil scientist. So, as far as the concerns of, of who we're using, um, it's Stamper Environmental, they're recommended by Union County. So, it's not like we took some random person that we thought was going to give us favorable results. Uh, and we have gone out and, uh, done test pits. We have, um, a, a letter from them stating that, uh, you know, we do have viable soils for the septic systems. So, a, as far as, uh, that being on us, like, we feel comfortable with where we're at as far as the septic studies are, are concerned. We did, you know, take all of the, um, comments that came out of our neighborhood meeting and took them to heart. Um, you know, we made some agreements while we were there, um, as far as, you know, some, some fencing and, and things of that nature. Uh, listened to the concerns of the neighbors. I, I think that this is a great application for where it is. Um, it's not like we're going in there and putting up four hundred homes on two hundred acres, very much the opposite. And, you know, uh, we have our engineers here, if you have any questions for, for them. We have, uh, the company that provided the TIA as well, uh, representative, representative from those guys. So, if you have any questions for him, and if you have any questions for me, if you have to answer.
What type of homes are you planning on putting on it?
Uh, well, as we stated in our neighborhood meeting, we, we cannot put, um, small starter homes here. Just, uh, price-wise, it doesn't work out as far as recuperating our money. They'll be mid-level houses, can't tell you that they're going to be, you know, two thousand square foot houses, they're going to be three thousand square foot houses.
Compare it to Beckenridge.
I'm sorry?
Compare it to Beckenridge.
Beckenridge, I, I don't know.
Uh, the one?
Brecken.
Is it what it?
Which one you talking about?
The one right down seventy-four here, before you get to Indian Trail on the right.
You're talking about the one their office is in, Brecken?
Yeah.
Oh, Breckenridge.
Yeah.
Uh, the houses that are behind there, I'm guessing you're asking. Uh, I mean, a lot of those are townhomes, and then behind there, there are some smaller homes. They'd be bigger than, than most of those homes. I mean, I'm, I'm guessing you're looking between two thousand and three thousand square foot, two-story homes.
More along the line of Stone Bridge?
Yeah, more along the lines of Stone Bridge, very similar.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the, uh, once the roads are installed in the subdivision, whose responsibility will be to take over the roads? Will the state take them over, or will you guys keep up the roads, or how's that work?
Uh, they would be DOT roads.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Galick? Okay. All right, anyone else from your team that wants to come and give feedback? Uh, we'll take it, the more, the merrier.
Good evening, Board, Nick Burns with Impact Designs, we did the traffic impact analysis.
Yes, sir.
I know a lot of times that's a, a common question in these areas.
Right.
And Bjorn, I did look back, we, originally, I didn't think we had a twenty-four-hour count on that road, but we did grab one in the very beginning. I think there was a, the daily count on that road was one fifteen. Um, we've been doing traffic studies for twelve years, and, uh, I've done, I think, five hundred different studies over thousands of intersections. And from a capacity standpoint, DOT would consider McManus, Latham, and Griffin to be, uh, roads that have excess capacity, as far as what they can carry with twelve hundred, two hundred and eighty, and then one fifteen. A two-lane road can carry a lot more traffic than that. So, with this one, we did a study at one fifty, I think that added about fourteen hundred and fifty cars for the entire day. Uh, now it's down to one thirty-eight, so that'd be around thirteen eighty. And at the intersection points, this is really where we do the analysis, we, there's a gradation of delay. And just like you're in school, it's A, B, C, D, F, and each of those intersections operates at level of service A. And with the additional traffic, not one intersection adds more than a second of delay. I think they're, I don't even think they add a half a second of delay. So, from a capacity standpoint, the roadway system can handle the, the current development, as is proposed. And this was, we don't do this?
What part of the road are you talking about? Are you talking about from the development like up to Lancaster Highway?
So, what we do, we do a studies, and we don't do anything in private, so everything's coordinated with the county and DOT. And so, the intersections we are required to study are Griffin and McManus, and Latham and McManus. So, we do a, a study agreed upon with NC DOT, or more often than not, required by DOT. And so, we study from a micro perspective what those intersections are doing. And then we hand all of our data over to them and the county, and from a macro perspective into the bigger system, they take our data and include it in future projects.
So, nobody's really done a study that would affect that a hundred and thirty-eight homes require trips to the grocery store, which is either going to put them in Waxaw or Monroe from that area, I think, would be the closest places. And so, would you not be adding all that traffic to those areas going to get your essentials?
With a, with a development of this size in this area, chasing a study out that far wouldn't be required by DOT or a municipality. And then trying to, you know, the statistics of it, to guess where and what time of day they would be doing this. Once you get out of way, it becomes really hard to kind of pin down.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else, uh, from? The petition group would like to speak? Okay.
Is there someone that, from engineering was here with the, could answer a question about the septics?
That is good, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Austin Coleman with V Three Southeast, we're providing civil engineering and landscape architecture. The soil scientist is not present tonight, but I can help answer any questions that I, I'm able to.
Yeah, is it, these, the, what, what type of septics going in for all the hundred and thirty-eight? I assume it's the same kind you're building?
It's my understanding, it's, it's a septic field syst- Yeah, i- in, essentially, these lots were, the way we looked at it is, um, the house, uh, wherever it's built, the other half, about approximately half of the other, um, part of the parcel is going to be undisturbed where your septic system would, would be, uh, installed.
Well, I have a question, then. Since there's not going to be wells on the property, does that give you a better leadway of where you can put the septic? By not having to take into association the amount from the well to the septic?
Correct, so we'll have, um, obviously, uh, public water throughout the, throughout the development. Um, and that will allow us to move around within that each parcel where the home is actually built and where that septic system is actually built.
So, basically, basically what you're saying is, some houses could have the septic system to the rear, some to the front, just wherever the soil worked best for that particular site?
Correct.
Okay. I have a question. We have ran into in the past where we had special use permits, whatever, someone would come before us, the house is sitting on the lot, but they can't add on because the septic tank has limited that. When you guys lay the septic out, do you have any provisions and figuring in case someone does want to add on to the house? Or is the house pretty much dedicated with no add-ons with the septic system? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
It does, a- and, and ultimately, I think that's going to be up to the, to the home builder, and then, um, so we've had, um, a couple hundred pits, uh, dug out on site to do an initial, uh, soil study. So, once each one of those parcels, um, starts to be built, there's going to be additional testing. And that, I mean, if we can, you know, shift the septic a little bit further back, um, you know, if, if they're planning for additions onto the house for, you know, twenty years from now, ten years from now, whenever, so.
So, you'd take that in?
It's parcel to parcel, yeah.
I, I may be able to, uh, help with that answer. Um, it, it's going to be our desire to put the septic systems in the back of, back of the homes. I mean, that, that's going to be our first blush, uh, with the test pits that we've taken. You know, all of this was taken into consideration as far as our layout was concerned. So, we have, we have thoughts that all this is going to work out. And then, like, uh, Bjorn said before, if some of these lots don't work out, they're just going to get carved off. It's going to be easier to do that than to kind of rejig everything else.
Uh, there's a quick question, and you may not know the answer to this, but, um, I mean, I know all the lots are kind of different, but is there like a median lot size? I mean, taking out the big ones, what's the normal lot, lot size roughly? You guys have an idea of that, because I'm just trying?
So, there's a, there's a typical lot layout, um, it's up where the public water extension, it's at the top of the, uh, the rezoning plan, but, um, we're showing approximately about a half acre. Uh, we're showing twenty thousand eight hundred.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Any other questions? Anybody else need to hear from anybody?
So there'll be houses that are actually on like a half acre lot?
I don't think they'll be building on it though. Oh, okay. Anything else for these gentlemen? Or anyone else from the True Home team that needs to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do y'all want to hear from anybody else?
Any in opposition?
Well, yeah, I will hear from them, but I'm just saying y'all won't hear anything else from the, from the folks from True Homes. Yeah. Okay, we had two folks sign up to speak in opposition. The first one is Darren Lathan. Mr. Lathan resides at 2020 Lathan Road in Monroe. And sir, I've been told that you have three minutes, but I'll try to be nice.
I'll do my best.
This guy here's gonna wave at you every minute.
All right, thank you. First question, when's the last time any of you have been down Lathan Road? Years ever? Please drive down Lathan Road and drive down McManus Road. Those roads are so far behind. Lathan Road's been on the list for NC DOT now and it's been bumped. It was bumped because of the traffic circle at Parkwood. That road has been torn to shreds only because they diverted the traffic. That wasn't even the, when they worked on that, that wasn't even the roads you're supposed to go around, just because a lot of people went down it. Those roads are so far behind. I don't care what North Carolina DOT says. Those roads aren't in a position to handle this kind of traffic unless there's some major work done to it. Please go down there and drive this if you would. This is a rural farming community. It's all farmland. And we're talking about sticking 140 homes in here and 140 septic systems. That by the way, will, most of these lots, at least half of them, if you see the site plan, will back up to the headwaters of Richardson Creek. They're gonna put the septic systems in the back because the lots are so narrow. And thank you for bringing up, to confirm that's a half an acre. I guess my question is, isn't there a state requirement now for a minimum acre? So we'll set that aside. But these, these lots, so many of these, that septic will be in the back and are gonna sit right on the edge of the floodplain to the headwaters of Richardson Creek. And that's a real concern because you heard it. There's no, there's no, you know, as far as being able to have someone check those and stuff as far as a municipality that's overseeing that. That's, that's a really concerning issue. Talk about the impact. Thank you. Talk about the impact. This is 140 homes. To your point, there's three, two or three more phases of Stonebridge that are being added to Parkwood and assumed to Prospect and the other schools. And I don't know what other developments might be out there from that standpoint that are gonna impact these schools. So that's 75 and 78% is, is probably well underserved as far as that number goes when the, when the full impact of these, of these developments takes place. Going back to the septic system. So, you know, you either put it in the front or in the back. They've already said, we're gonna put it in the back with the least impact. Where's the repair field? Septic systems are required to have a very large repair field. Where does that go? There are no side lots. These are almost like zero lot lines, right? They're at the absolute minimum. There shouldn't be this kind of density. This density is for when you get closer into town and city. That's not meant for a rural farming community, this type of density. So that's, that's, you know, basically what I wanted to say. So please take a hard look at this one. There are much better places to put a neighborhood than out here. Thank you for your time.
All right, the next person is Jimmy Tarleton, 4214 McManus Road.
Can I ask a question? I didn't know you had the availability to sign up and speak on McManus Road. Would it be possible after Linda gets through that I could speak?
Sure.
Yeah, 'cause she's where the three-way stock signs go then. She's definitely in family.
Okay, no problem. I'm sorry, they brought, you might've come in late. I don't know. It was outside, but that's, I, thank you.
Well, I'm Linda Tarleton. Our property joins this development.
You're not Jimmy?
Nope. I'm, I'm the better half. I'm Linda. Jimmy's back here.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm the spokesperson. I, I just wanna reiterate what Darren has said. The traffic, I invite every one of you to come through McManus Road. I wish you would've had the opportunity to come through McManus Road when they had the traffic diverted through and they were building the roundabout at Rough Edge. It's chaos, absolute chaos. The road is awful. Lathan Road is worse than that. By the way, I was a Lathan. I'm on family land that joins this development. We ask for a fence to go on the property line between us and the development. There's a floodplain there in front of our house that goes on to the development. And then we're talking about the size of the lots. We were told they would be one acre lots. Now we're here tonight, it's gonna be a half an acre. How are you gonna put a septic tank on half an acre that's gonna flow into Richardson Creek? It makes no sense. You've got better places to put housing developments than here. I mean, you know. But I guess that's it. I just, I beg you. Go down there and travel Lathan Road, McManus Road and just see the property. Because the farmers travel those roads. They get potholes. They're heavily traveled during farming season. And please, just drive on the road. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, you got another, you got a minute.
The question I have is, it's already zoned for one house per acre, right? That's what they say. Okay, they're gonna put 138 houses. They told us by law, we can put 208 houses 'cause it's zoned. R40, whatever. Why do they want it rezoned? They can put these 138 houses in it zoned like it is right now. Or they gonna ask for 138 and then turn around and put 250? Or try to put 250? What's the truth up front? We don't know.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am, I want you to come up. Please tell me your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Sybil Biggers. I live at 4113 McManus Road. If you could put up those four pictures you had a while ago, I'll show you where I live.
What was your last name again? I'm sorry.
Biggers.
Biggers, okay.
If you look, see that top picture? Can you show that picture right there? That's my house. That is my house right there.
All right.
That road.
Top right?
Yes, right here on the top left facing me. That's my house. That is my house. McManus Road makes a sharp curve right in front of my house. I'm gonna speak on a different background, not based on what you can build. I'm gonna tell you from an emotional aspect what has happened. My husband, his mother was a McManus. That's why then rode his name McManus Road. My mother-in-law was her grandmother. This is family land. My husband died tragically October the 7th. He fell off a ladder on his head and had massive skull fractures and facial fractures and he did not survive. His name is Mike Biggers. His family lived on this road and they had a small business of painting their whole life. That's what all of them did. So this is where we call home. But now let me tell you what's left of home. My husband died. After my husband died of October 2021, we just celebrated his second year anniversary passing away, October the 7th. Right after that, his brother died. His sister died. His nephew died. I had to put our two dogs asleep 11 days apart. And then right after that, his home place burnt down. The only peace that we have left of our family is this road right here, peace and quiet. And another thing you're taking away from us, that's farmland. So we get to come home after working in Charlotte in different areas. This is our only place that we can call peace and have a place to just unwind because we don't have anybody left. Now I have to face getting these houses brought in for people we don't even know what even, what's gonna happen, you know, who's gonna come in. And I think this gentleman said there was several hundred cars that went down this road every day. No, there's probably 25 to 30. I'll be glad to count them tomorrow 'cause I'm off tomorrow. But I can tell you that one thing that goes away is another person's livelihood, the farming. I just talked to the guy two weeks ago that cut the corn and he said, this is the last time we get to farm it. So we, this land is being taken away from us. So they took away his income. We have no heritage left if you take this away because this is our family's land. This is the only thing we've ever known. We don't have any family left. This is all we have. This is the only heritage. And I'm, okay. Well, I appreciate your time. I just wanted to express mine from a different viewpoint, not from a builder's viewpoint.
Thank you, Mrs. Biggers.
Thank you.
Okay.
I too ran by the sign up. I'm sorry, I was lost trying to get in here. I'm walking in when you started.
All right, well, I give you three minutes.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'm being generous tonight.
Yes, you are. I may not need that long.
Tell me your name, please.
Amy Boyce. I live at 4004 McManus Road. So just below my Aunt Sybil's home. I reiterate everything they said. I will not repeat that. I have questions as well as the expense of this on the county. 'Cause we, I may have misunderstood at the first meeting we went to, but we were told county was not gonna assist in running water out there. So who pays for that? Like, where does that expense? Does my tax money pay for that?
The developer.
The developers will pay for that?
Right.
And who's gonna be responsible in three to four years to build prospect that is untouched, has never been remodeled? Parkwood Middle, Parkwood High's had some addition, but they are reaching their capacity. I don't know where the numbers come from, but I have friends that are principals out there, teachers. There's houses going up all around us that's already put an extra headcount into that. And then when you take away the dignity of the area we live in, I agree with Jimmy. Why do you need to get it rezoned? If you're gonna build, put the one house per acre. Because I don't know of any, we've lived there all our lives. We have trails. We used to ride our four-wheelers. Richardson Creek runs from their area all the way back behind my house. It's a natural floodplain. Part of the reason the land's not being touched is nature's taking that away from them to protect itself. And I would like for y'all to take that into consideration and ride the speed limit around all those roads, please, in your vehicles. And you'll see our concern with the roads and the safety of the families and the children that already live there.
Well, let's get an answer to the question that's been asked about two or three times. Bjorn?
Yes, sir.
The rezoning request.
Yes.
It's R40 now, right?
RA40.
Okay. But the rezoning request is what would give them the ability to go to a half acre lot, correct?
That, that is the request. That's correct.
Okay, there you go. So the rezoning is for the, be able to build the houses on smaller lots instead of an acre lot?
That's correct.
Okay.
So basically Bjorn, if given the floodplain issues, given all that, is that the reason why they had to? I mean, what, why wouldn't you build 200 houses?
I mean, they're in the business of building homes. That's a question for them of whether this is better.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm wondering, is there floodplain? Where's the floodplain? What's, what's the floodplain?
It's essentially the dashed areas through here. The floodplain as a percent of the overall size is actually not that high. I think it was maybe 15 acres? 16 acres? If my memory's not too bad. 16 acres of floodplain. So that, that's land that truly is taken off the top. To say that, I mean, I can't say how many homes could be built here by right. It's not gonna be 208 though. There's always inefficiencies. You're not gonna build on top of the streams. You've gotta build roads right away. That gets taken off. So it's not gonna be 208. I can't say what it is though.
Well, the assumption I'm assuming is there's, there's no open land here that houses can be built on, probably. Well, I can ask Mr. Gallick of that question. I guess if you could come up, please, is, is there any wasted land here that you could, oh, we could build a house there?
I mean, there, there's a couple of areas that we could possibly, we, we took the septic study and that's, that's what.
That what drove this, right? The septic. So if you, if you did build one acre lots, you would cut this down to 70 houses maybe, or less than 130.
Correct.
Because you just don't have the septic ability to.
Correct.
And then the other thing would be, tell me if I'm wrong. It costs money to build them roads and put them houses in there. So the smaller you make them lots, the less it costs to develop the development.
There, there has to be enough rooftops to support the infrastructure, correct? Including the, the water line.
So if they were all on acre lots, that would mean that much more piping and so on and so forth to feed everything, correct?
No, not necessarily.
No, I'm talking about if you set 138 houses like you're asking and everything had an acre lot.
We, we couldn't make it happen.
It wouldn't work.
It wouldn't work, but if it could work, it would still cost more infrastructure to provide it that way.
Yes, sir.
Right.
But the reality is that you are, you're forced to take what you got and make the most of it and try to make it as appealing as possible. I mean, you could go make one acre lots and build $2 million houses maybe, but they probably wouldn't sell out there. So.
Yes, sir. We tried to make the best out of the situation and, and, you know, leaving the bad areas untouched. That way, you know, it, it still has that rural feel.
All right. You've got another minute if you want to take.
Thank you, sir.
We wanted to clarify.
We asked in the meeting, but I wanted to ask you all, when you see the roads, you'll see our concern. Will the DOT be made to upgrade all these roads with this coming in? Will they have to do something? Because I promise you, I keep picking on Lathan Road, but Griffith is about as more congested daily. That was our other concern, you know? Who maintains our road when they get done building and we have 1,500 cars a day back and forth?
Well, the truth of the matter, like all the rest of it, living in the rural areas, nobody's gonna mess with it because each road's gonna get in line from the state. And when the money's there, they'll work on them.
That's what I was wondering. Does that speed, does that help bump these roads up on the list anyhow? Just, that's why I'm asking. I don't know.
We can't answer that question. I mean, more, the more traffic count you have, the more chance, I'm sure you're gonna get. I mean, I mean, a dirt road still out there ain't gonna get paved.
Yes, sir. Understood. Just one last question in planning ahead. If this gets approved, how do you as a board plan ahead to build these schools up just in the area?
Well, that's not, I call it all, that's.
So that would be another, but I didn't know if they had to come through you all. That's why I was asking. Okay, thank you, sir.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Gallick.
Yes, sir.
Or either Bjorn, either one. As far as, I know development-wise, the entrance and all that, are there gonna be turn lane? How's that gonna be? Y'all have to build out turn lanes or something?
It is, it is just the rejigging the intersection itself.
Okay. All right, just going back to her question, is there gonna be any improvement right there? Bjorn, is that true?
That's a true statement. There was initially a discussion of a turn lane, but honestly, it didn't make sense. And also it would encourage people to drive faster. So having everyone stop there is the appropriate movement. I mean, we have plenty of roads carrying a lot more traffic than this that are working fine with an all-way stop.
Sure.
And that's what would happen here.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bjorn, basically with the staff giving your approval, then all the requirements that you guys have asked for have been accepted. So you guys are good with it?
Yeah, it's not our approval. It's what we're recommending.
That's what I'm saying though. Everything that has been presented to you, you guys feel good about everything since you are.
We're looking at the positives and the negatives. Are there things we would like different? Yeah, we would, it would be better if this were on sewer as well as septic, but it's, it's not. So what we have is what we're looking at. We, our job is to negotiate with the developer and apply our development standards to come up with the best proposal for you. And I can say this is the best we could, we could come up with and negotiate. And I can say this is the best we could, we could come up with in negotiation with them and the DOT.
Okay. That's why, as, as long as you guys are recommended, then I feel good that you guys have covered all the bases on everything that needs building.
And I'll, I'll say to Bjorn's point, when, when we evaluate one, one of these, we, we do look at, again, positives and negatives and but one of the ultimate decision factors for us is the adopted comprehensive plan. That adopted comprehensive plan, you know, talks about a one-acre density in these rural residential areas. But what, what we don't, when, when we're looking at these, we're not, your, your, your job is to take into consideration that plus comments from the developer and the, and the public that, that lives there. We're, we're kinda doing, doing these analysis. So we don't have a lot of that public part of it. And that's, 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 that's what you do and that's, that's what you look for. So, you know, I don't want you to just think that because we're recommending something that you have to recommend it. You know, you evaluate it independently of, of what we do.
But in actuality, you're not really recommending it. You've just mitigated something that would work if it's approved.
And, and, and we recommend approval or denial based on those factors and, and the comprehensive plan. So that's, that's essentially what we're doing.
Mr. Bjorn, you know that the school, the school capacity numbers, is that just current right now or that doesn't?
That was.
Doesn't take into account all the things that are happening?
That was spring of, spring of twenty twenty-three from Union County Public Schools.
So it doesn't take any of the new development into account?
It was.
Besides this one?
It's a, it's a snapshot in time, spring of twenty twenty-three, that's all I can say.
It's the current capacity, that's how many kids are going to the schools.
Based on, and their rated capacity, that's right.
Gotcha. When every house is built, that goes up.
That could. Or, or as families age out, it could go down.
Any other questions for me, for anyone?
I guess as far as the schools go, the one plus in it would be the fact that, like you said, he's not building starter homes.
I, we don't have enough nuance to be able to say that the demographics are gonna change that much based on the, the price point.
But I guess what I'd say, it wouldn't be as bad as if you was building fourteen hundred to eighteen hundred square foot houses versus two or three thousand.
If, if they were million dollar homes, I'd say, yeah, a good percent are gonna go to private school. Or they're, those aren't your normal, you know, mom, dad and three kids type of families. So they're just normal neighborhood homes, that's really all I can say.
Is there any, is there any sewers coming this way?
No, there's no plans for sewer to serve this.
Okay. Mr. Ward, you got any other questions? You good?
As far as the septic field on a half-acre lot, someone brought the point up of you have no space for repair. That would be a concern of mine. What is the plan going forward? If someone builds a house on this half-acre lot, you build a house, someone purchased a house on a half-acre lot and you have an issue? I mean, you can't, you can't very well put it on your neighbors. So what if the plan going forward in that regard?
And I'll, I'll answer that. It's, it's our understanding that that repair field is required and it's not gonna go on your, on your neighbor's lot. It's gonna be within, contained on each, on each lot.
So you're saying in a half-acre lot, what'd you say the average square footage was gonna be of the homes?
Two thousand, three thousand square feet.
Okay, three thousand square feet, so you're looking at least three bathrooms. And then you're gonna have enough extra room on a half-acre lot with a three thousand square foot house to have an additional septic field?
Yeah. That will be left in the hands of, of Stamper. I mean, I, I'm not a soil scientist, I'm not a, a septic designer.
Well, that's, that's my whole concern, the whole part that you're leaving it in the hands of somebody beyond the county.
And they're not here to talk to me right now.
And, and I, I understand that. We didn't just randomly pick a septic, a septic company. I think the county has eight.
That's, that, that's not the point of that. I mean, I'm not questioning their ability to do anything. I'm just questioning the common sense here. You got a half-acre land, you got a three thousand square foot house, you got a septic system on it and you're supposed to have room for a repair system. I think you're pushing envelope there just, but I mean, it may be that they've got some way you can just go in there and rip out what they got and redo it. I don't know, I'm not in their business.
We, we have presented to them our, our plan. Like, we, we took their, their septic, their, their dig holes, their test pits. Then we designed the plan, we put it in front of them. They were confident in our plan. All I can speak to is that we, we have all that information. I'm happy to provide it to you guys. We're not in the business of putting homes on things that we can't serve. That would be counterintuitive. A, a lot of our home building and home buying is based off of word of mouth. Our survey results speak for themselves. We're, we're constantly between ninety and ninety-five percent of willingness to prefer. That means we go back and we take care of our clients, our home, homeowners, home buyers. And, you know, if, if we made a bad name for ourselves in our own neighborhood here in Monroe, we, we wouldn't continue building.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I just, I, most of us up here, been here a while and we grew up in the country and we all had septic tanks. And we're just thinking about, okay, half-acre lot, septic tank, room for a house. It's just, I think that's where you're going, right? It's kind of, I don't know if there's new technology. I don't know, maybe there is, I'd like to hear from somebody.
My particular lot, I've got a, I've got a little over nine acres of land. But the way the house and the land lays, I've got just enough room for one field there if needed, if anything happens to the existing.
I think the main question is that we're all concerned about is even though the engineering firm approves everything, says it's good to go, two years from now, one of these houses starts having problem with a septic system. Whose responsibility is it yours or is it the engineering firm? Who's going to correct it or who's going to buy the house back?
That is all a good question. My hope, and, and I don't know that.
Not, not your hope, we just wanna know what plans are.
Well, so i- if we get to that point where we're at a questionable, we're, we're not gonna build a house on a questionable lot. I mean, that, that's just not our business.
You're guaranteeing that?
And, and, and we start out with the conventional system, that's what we wanna start out with. But as you know, you know, you go into a panel system or something like that that's more vertical, that, that takes our space away from, you know, being, you know, taking up half the lot to taking up very little of the lot. But yes, I mean, we're, we're not gonna build houses if we think that we're not going to be able to serve our clients.
Just as a curious note on what you built, how many of your systems is probably gonna have to require the pump to pump the water to the drain field?
We, we would hope none if we're going to the rears of the lots.
So that's the purpose of going to the rear?
There, there's a whole, whole lot of benefits of going to the rear.
Well, that's just one thing I, I deal with. And I mean, yeah.
I think what's going on is we're getting involved in engineering that we don't know anything about. As long as this company guarantees that they're going to accept any responsibility and then the county can take that and go with it, then there's nothing we can say about it.
But the difference is we're not doing a special use permit.
I know that.
Okay, but I mean, the zoning thing is a little bit different.
I understand.
Okay.
But he's guaranteeing what he's doing is gonna work or he's gonna take care of it. That's all we can say, that's all we can ask for.
Bjorn, you, you had a, you raised your hand.
I did. I am not saying this to sell this application at all. But I will say that when we did our implementation committees for various issues relating to the comprehensive plan, we received a presentation from Union County Environmental Health about flexibility in lot sizes in the rural areas to allow clustering to happen in situations like this. And we received a presentation from Union County Environmental Health that showed with well and septic, if everything was ideal, you can actually make that work on a, on a twenty thousand square foot lot. And these obviously are not on well. So it is not outside of the realm of possibility to have a septic field work on a twenty thousand square foot lot. This is information we have received. Now again, that was based on an ideal situation and it was not based on looking at this specific site. So that should not be conveyed to assume that all hundred and thirty-eight will work here. But from a, a laying everything out perspective, our own department did show that that is a, a serviceable lot size.
Well, the questions I had about it wanting to, I know you'd make that work, that's not a problem. I was more concerned with the repair area.
Well, that was part, that, that included that.
So you're saying that what they was saying, that you could have a well, a septic tank plus a repair area on a half-acre lot?
That's right.
And I, I will say that was caveated by environmental health if everything.
That's right.
If the soil conditions were perfect, which, which we know is a lot of times not the case in Union County, but.
Well, I just started to say evidently that don't look at in Union County.
Oh, yeah. Do you say, did you have a question?
I was pointing Mr. Lathan over there.
Okay.
I have a question in, in regards to Mr. Gallick's comment he made a minute ago.
I'm sorry, I just, I want people to hear you.
As part of this context, just to understand.
Mark, call, please.
A few minutes ago, a few minutes ago, he said, except for all the bad areas. Did you guys catch that? You see how much property on that site plan is bad area? That's because it won't perk, it's gonna take low pressure. I would ask that we see the study of all the digs that they done and actually understand how much of that land will even perk because you're gonna fill it up with a, you know, fifty, a hundred low-pressure systems and that stuff's gonna have to be above ground for it to drain, too. So again, it's, we still, we got a, a serious issue here of what actually may work from a standpoint of a half an acre. So I, I'd like a clarification, okay, why, why not the bad areas? What, what's wrong? Why are they bad areas is my question.
Mr. Chairman? I, I will throw, throw, throw this out. Once, once you receive, just for your knowledge, once you receive an application, once one's sent to you to review, you have forty-five days to send a recommendation to the county commissioners. There are a lot of questions about the septic system. You could defer action for a month, that forty-five days would give you the opportunity to do that, to ask that they bring back their soil scientists to the next meeting to answer some of those questions. Because obviously, we can't answer those questions. We're not soil scientists, we don't know. The folks that did the soil evaluations are, are not here.
I recommend we do that.
Again, I just want you to know that you have the ability to do that.
But I, I have a question then. Clarify the difference in the septic systems that he was just mentioning, the low pressure and so what?
Not a, I'm, once again, not, not a septic guy, but I mean, I know that you've got your conventional system that, you know, you've got lots of line, has plenty of time to diffuse. You've got, you know, a, a pump system that, that brings it up to the upper layer to, you know, get it to, to drain out, just different ways of draining the systems. I'm not gonna try to tell you, I, I know all the different systems. But I know there are different systems that we can do smaller, smaller systems, make them work. And as, as far as the, the soils are concerned, we're, we're putting these houses where the better soils are. Where there are bad soils, where there, you know, the, the bad areas of the, the job, we're not putting houses there.
You've been involved in that for planning the development, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, then what type of systems are they recommending for you to use in here?
That, that will be dependent when we go out there lot by lot. It, it has not been recommended what goes on each lot at this time.
So in other words, one lot might be able to accept the tank and four drain lines at a hundred foot and then the next one might have to have the, where they piece it all together in a smaller area and bring the sand and all that in.
It may, but we, we, anything that was even marginal, we, we did not put a lot there. So it, we're already dealing with, with the hundred and thirty-eight homes. These are the best suited sites on the entire property.
And just to clarify, so everybody understands, you want the best suited sites because you have to invest the least amount of money in the lot and can focus more on the house to sell a product in that particular place, correct?
That's where we make the money, yes.
Okay.
Was this design from scratch for half hour, for half acre lots? Or did you have a, another design in the beginning, you know, in the R forty zoning?
This may be the fourth iteration.
So how many houses in the beginning, if you were gonna stick to the zoning, were you?
Well, initially, we would have liked to have gone by rate and done two hundred homes. That didn't work. Then I think we were, eventually we were at a hundred and fifty and then now we're at a hundred and thirty-eight. And I mean, you know, the, the acceptance of this would be that a hundred and thirty-eight's the max. We, we can't come back to you and say, hey, we want to do two hundred.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Mr. Chairman, I did, I don't know if, if on the sign-up sheet, if you had gotten down to the owners of the property, the Persers, that they are here in attendance as well?
They're on here, I asked anybody who wanted to speak.
Yeah, so they're, they're called them out and that they wanted to speak as well?
Yeah, if they wanna speak, that's fine.
I'm Jeff Purser. I've had probably more contact out of the two of us with True Homes. To begin with, whenever we got together to potentially sell the property to True Homes, we did our homework and we liked what we saw. They seem to be a very reputable company. They're in Union County. As a land seller, you wanna make sure someone's able to follow through and deliver the money whenever it's done and they're financially stable, which is also important as a home builder. For, I've seen times where neighborhoods were started and they were abandoned because the builders ran out of money. So we like them, both of us do. We feel very comfortable with them. I heard some discussions about some things. I'd just like to bring up some points to me that's either been overlooked or obvious. There is the fresh water being brought in. I didn't hear anyone say anything about fire hydrants. No one, no one objected to having fire hydrants out there. I also understand there was a house that burned down recently. It might would have been nice to have had a fire hydrant out there perhaps for that, for that home. But, but if nothing else, I know from my own personal experience, I'm sure you folks do too, that whenever I go and buy my homeowner's insurance, that if I'm within so many feet of a fire hydrant, I get a better rate than if I'm not. So I, I mean, I, I would hope that people maybe would consider that fact. Also want you to know, too, that we actually do own the property. There seems to be some dispute about taking our property, someone having our property taken from them. Just wanna make sure that you understand that we feel like owning the property and our family has owned this property for just shortly before Hugo, Hurricane Hugo came through. So we think that's thirty-five, thirty-eight years. So we're not just new to it. But my brother and I, this is investment property for us. Our intentions are to do something with the property. We've treated everyone fairly, by the way, and associated with property. The home builder, he's been with us every step of the way. He's told us what would happen. They did start larger, they encountered issues and, and they've worked through them. They've worked very hard for this and I do think it would be a good job. The, the property is, is zoned for housing now. It's not like something different's coming in that wasn't supposed to be there. If for some reason, if we ended up owning the property, we would do something. And I doubt it would be very favorable to the people here because every time it seems like we try to do something with the property, then no one wants us to be able to have the use of our property. with the property, that no one wants us to be able to have the use of our property. And I hope that you can appreciate, as a landowner, we would like to be able to do something with our property. So we are very much in favor of it, and there was also a mention about a farmer losing his right to farm the property. With Brantley Farms, if you know Brantley Farms, Charlton Ploward farmed the land prior to that, and he stepped away from it. Brantley came to us, and he's been a fine farmer, and they've got more property than this. We're not putting anyone out of their work. There's a hunting club that hunts out there. We've given them all, been very liberal with them. And our tenant, who's there now, she'll have to vacate the house, we're actually giving her money to help her move out, and she's living rent free the last few months of hers. So we're taking care of everyone, and I think True Homes will be a real asset. I look at this property and think about the amount of green space. The only fifty-two percent, or with fifty-two percent of the property is going to be green space after it's complete. I think that's a big plus. It's a huge plus for whenever you get into developed areas, they're really talking about the green space. So they're going to have the setbacks, you know, from the creeks and all. I just, people don't want change, I understand that. But sometimes a bird in the hand works two in the bush, for I think this is positive change. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Since you haven't spoke, you want, yes, sir?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
My name's Stan Perser. And appreciate you gentlemen's time tonight. My brother and I do own this property, and we got that by way of our parents. My mother and daddy were born and raised in Union County. This property has been in the control of our family for thirty-five years. We have a lot of relatives that live in this area, in this neighborhood. You may know some Yorkes, some Dunkins, Haglers, Whitleys. So I don't live here, but I'm not a foreigner either. I live in Matthew's son of Charlotte. What Jeff said is true. We have a piece of property, and we're trying to be good stewards of that. Man's called to do that, part of God's creation, to be a good steward. I appreciate the opening with a prayer today, too. We tried to do that. We've connected with True Homes, we did our due diligence with them, and we feel like it's a bonus that they're a local business, but even better than that, they've got a great reputation. They build a quality product, and they stand behind it. And I heard y'all talking about that, well, he's going to stand behind his product. And like Jeff said, I don't like change. No man does. My wife moves furniture, and I don't like it. But that's the way it is. I did hear talk about this being a farming community. Mr. Lathan, are you a farmer?
No.
Okay.
Hold on.
No, that's all I want. And the point is, you talked about the farmers. I get that, but that's part of progress. That's part of progress. We've got two hundred and almost nine acres, and most of you have got good sized lots, probably about an acre, correct? That's all I'm saying. And Ms. Biggers, I'm very sorry for your loss. I'm very sorry. And we live in a time in this world, it's hard to find peace regardless. It's hard to find peace, and I understand about wanting to go home and find peace. I do believe, though, ultimately, somebody else will have this piece of property. I believe in my heart that you could not have a better partner come in there and develop this property than True Homes, because it's only, like Jeff said, it's only going to be about fifty percent developed, and there are going to be a lot of green space. The houses are going to be nice sized. And I would just, I'll just tell you, we fully support True Homes, and it's nice to meet you neighbors.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll give you just a minute, if you could.
It's nothing personal. I mean, I have nothing against these gentlemen. My wife is third or fourth generation on what we've got. Darren is third or fourth generation. Her family is third or fourth generation. No, we don't farm it, but somebody does farm it. And second, the end of the road on the north side, if DOT does not fix it, it's on a hill, somebody will be killed. And when it happens, it'll either be the trucks coming in to do the work or whatever. I don't like to turn there myself. You turning left on a hill, you can't see over it. And the next point, the last one, this is a shiny object on the hill to them. But everything, every drop of water that doesn't sink in is going to end up in Richardson Creek, all the way around.
Thank you, sir. Okay, board. What say you?
Well, I'll say that if any of us have any questions about the septic system, that we could defer it for thirty, forty-five days and let them bring the soil samples back in, the engineers, and let them explain it. But if everybody's good with it, I don't have a problem with it. I feel like I would feel better if the soil engineer would come in and say, hey, this, you know, that makes sense, what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
What do y'all think?
I think that seems to be where most questions arise, so probably it'd hurt us to get the hand extra.
Well, I need a motion to that effect then, please. Our next meeting is November twenty-first, I believe. Is that correct? Okay. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that would defer it. Not that we're turning it down, we're just deferring it to get further information.
Part of that motion to make specific requests of the developer?
The developer, to have the soil analysts, engineers to be here at the next meeting, to let them present their side of it, so that us and the people that are living around it feel confident after this decision's made. But all we're doing is making a referral back to county commissioners. We don't have a final say. We're either saying, yeah, we feel like it'd be good, or no, we say it won't be good. So in order for us to feel good about sending it over to the county commissioners, if we had this information, then I think we'd all feel better.
I agree. I have a very difficult time sending it positive till I hear more about what the septic situation's going to look like. So that's your motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Do we need any more information?
Anything else y'all want, other than that?
What about the other intersections? There need to be any improvements made to those intersections?
I don't think we'll have any control over that.
Yeah, I don't think we can control that too much, but.
I have concerns about it, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Is there any information that can be brought to us at that time?
I think with what they've already done, the traffic study, and the impact study on traffic, I think that's all that could be done for us.
Muir, is there any? There's no further probably anything that DOT could come and tell us?
There's nothing, the DOT is not going to come to this meeting. There's nothing else to present. We reviewed the TIA, these were the recommendations. Could you require some additional approval? The problem is, then it comes back, what happens if that's a requirement? And then the DOT says, for some engineering reason, the road cannot be widened anymore, because maybe the ditches are such that you would have to go to curb and gutter, and they don't have the right of way or something, and then you've put them into an impossible situation. So that's the type of condition where it would almost flip it back to square one to make sure that it's actually feasible.
Okay, thank you. Okay. You okay with that? Anything else? So we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor say aye. Aye in your post. Okay, we will see you back here on November twenty-first. Please bring your soil scientists and talk to us about that. Y'all are all welcome to be back here at that time. Thank you. All right, next item is planning staff report.
I think that I have just a report back that the board commissioners adopted the tech amendment regarding transportation, the transportation plan. They adopted that last night.
Okay. Excellent. Muir, you got anything?
I do not.
Okay. Board, any comments? Start down at the end with Mr. Baughan. Any comments?
No comments tonight, Mr. Green.
Mr. Ward, any comments?
No comments here.
How about you, Mr. Davidson?
No comments.
And Mr. Edwards?
No comment.
Let's tip.
I'll make a comment. I think this was very productive, the way this went tonight.
I believe it did, too. It's our first real run on one of these, and I gave some levity, but I'm willing to do that.
You're just a good guy.
I'm just a good guy. All right, nothing else. I motioned, we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion with adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. None opposed, good night. Everybody go home and enjoy the rest of your week.